Good evening, everyone. Thanks for coming out tonight. I really appreciate an opportunity to sit with four folks here in North Sacramento to talk about this important race. As David said, my name is Daniel Savala. I'm a resident here at North Sacramento, right here on Del Paso Boulevard. I'm the father of two children, Daisy and Trinidad Savala, age seven and eight. In my full-time job, I am a council representative working for Councilmember Alan Warren. And in my spare time, I like to coach youth sports. What I really want to do is, in my opening statement, is one, tell you a little bit about myself, but lay out some real criteria for tonight's debate, class discussion. There's two words I want you to stand out as you judge all three of us tonight. One is transparency and community engagement. Those are two of the things that are really going to move this district forward. And I think those are the two most important topics throughout this entire election. So when you look at us tonight, think about those two things, transparency and community engagement. That's really what I hope to hit home this evening. So again, thank you for being here tonight, and I look forward to an exciting discussion tonight.
Mr. Garcia, your turn.
Okay. Good evening, everybody, and it's an honor for me to be here, to be able to speak in front of North Sacramento. I am an ex-school board member for North Sacramento School District. I was on the board with Ms. Fowler, and I'm very involved in my community. I'm also a parent of two children, but my children go to local schools. That's the difference between myself and the opponents up here. My children go to our local schools, and I've been involved with my children since they were in kindergarten. I've been the school site president of Haganwood Elementary, Stroud, and Rio Terra. Now I'm at Grant. And I do have the experience or disposition. I do believe we need transparency, and we do need community and parent involvement. And I believe I can bring that to the table, because people will see me as one of their own. So with that, I'll let the next person speak.
Ms. Fowler, your turn. Well, thank you very much, and it's a pleasure to be here again tonight, but for everyone, it's been an honor and a privilege to have been the representative for Area 7 for several years. I also believe in transparency, and I believe that candidates who are running for the school board should come to the school board meetings, which they haven't done. Secondly, the community engagement I believe in, and I think my record clearly shows that I have had community engagement. As a matter of fact, it was not too long ago that I was over at the Noralto and the Johnson School commending them on their gold ribbon status. So it's not just to be able to come out in the community and do things. You have to also be engaged with the individuals, the parents, everyone involved in the school, including the staff. So I believe that I have that record, and I will continue to work hard for this district as I always have, because children are my passion. I have no children in the district, because most of my children, or all of my children, are probably older than most of the people in the audience, and they wouldn't qualify for a K-12 program.
All right, thank you. So, first candidate question. In a recent article in the Sacramento Bee, it was noted that four Twin Rivers High Schools were in the top 10 in the truancy rates in the entire region. What would you do as a school board member to evaluate this problem? Ms. Fowler, I'm going with you first.
Well, one of the things that I think we need to look at, and what is truancy? And the way the reporting is to the California Department of Education is truancy is really not what you say in a school. Whenever you say that there's 97% truancy, what you tell people that there's only 3% of the kids going to school. And that's not it. Every time a child is late, five minutes late, it's called truancy. If there's a class that they have skipped, it's called a truancy. But you know, one of those kind of things is, we have to look at parents, and we have to look at what they're doing, and what is the responsibility of the parent to make certain that those children get to work, get to school on time, and also to make certain that they understand the responsibility for actually attending classes. Those are the kind of things that we have to do. And this is not just our area, this is statewide. If you look at the California Department of Education statistics, you'll note that we were not anything below what is in the norm of the California State Districts. And if you're looking at over 1,000 districts in California, and you're looking at all those statistics, and you know yourself, you have children in the district, you probably have some that have been late for class, and they have skipped classes, and so therefore, whose responsibility is it? Is it the schools, or is it the parents? Who is it? We have to work together to make certain that there's some kind of incentive to make certain that those students want to come to class, and that they will be there on time. So that would be the thing I would do for truancy.
Thank you. Mr. Garcia, same question.
Okay. Sorry about that. I would have to agree with Ms. Fowler. Those statistics aren't really fair, and I do believe that the issue would have to do with parents, and the district has to find a way to connect with those parents. And I believe by having parents on the board, or a board member that's actually a true parent in this community, we can catch out to them. But it is something that we need to work on. Thank you.
Daniel, that's an extremely alarming figure. I'll look here and discuss whether it's accurate or not accurate. You can make statistics, say anything you want, right? But the issue, it isn't a problem, and it's a substantial problem. You look at how schools are funded, truancy is a direct hit to their bottom line. And to have it at that rate, something needs to be done. The first thing I would take a look at is the process, the policy and procedure around truancy, because if it begins early on in preschool, first and second grade, it's obviously a trend is developing, and you'll see those same issues come up in high school. I'd really take a look at how Twin Rivers evaluates truancy. Are there truancy officers? Is the department funded well enough to address the problem? And that's important, because we want to make sure we have capacity to address these things early on. So we have a problem. The issue is with the status quo isn't getting the job done. We've got to take a look at what policies and procedures exist, are there any deficiencies, and are we funded at capacity to make sure we don't see this continue to happen throughout the course of child education? Thank you.
Thank you. Second question for you all. The Twin Rivers School District has been hit with multiple lawsuits in recent years costing the district millions. As a school board member, what can you do to eliminate these lawsuits? Daniel, I'll start with you, sir.
Unlike my opponent, I don't have a juris doctorate, so there's not much I can do to help with any legal advice to the district. But it's been alarming and very upsetting to read the headlines in Twin Rivers over the last couple of years with lawsuits. I'm not here to poke fun at the past, or scrutinize what's happened in the past directly. I'm just more focused on moving forward. Right now, currently, in my current job, part of what I do is help my council member right now manage upwards of $20 million worth of capital improvements in the city, even on the P-Bud here in North Sacramento, a good half a million dollar budget that we manage annually. I've got the experience to take a look at some of these issues and priorities, how we manage funds, how we manage policies that could lead to litigation. So I've got experience to come in and sit on the board and make sure that we're making the right decisions, and we avoid litigation. But like I said, unlike my opponent, I do not have a law degree.
Mr. Garcia.
Okay. First of all, city business and school district business, two different areas. I believe the way to work with that would be to make sure that the district has the right law firm in place. And also, you need to work with your employees. You need to find a way for the district and the administration to be able to work with the teachers' unions, to be able to work with the classified union, and to give people a livable wage, and try to help people, freedom with respect. And sometimes that's not happening. I was at a meeting about a year ago when classified were asking for a raise, and some of them were saying that they couldn't afford their rent. And a certain board member told them, well, if they can't afford their rent, then move. That's totally disrespectful. You need to learn how to treat people with respect.
Ms. Fowler, your turn.
I want to address the lawsuits themselves. Number one, the lawsuits that you read about in the newspaper were those lawsuits of which the Twin Rivers inherited whenever they were unified. To give you just the idea, these were lawsuits that had been filed by people who were in the Grant District, and there were 52 lawsuits filed. North Sacramento didn't have one of them, and neither did Rio Linda or Del Paso, so these all emanated from the Grant District. Whenever you have any individual that files a lawsuit against any place, you are negligent if you don't defend that lawsuit. And we had to defend those lawsuits. And if you don't, you can't have a default judgment and expect to pay big money. We have only had two lawsuits filed in the last three years against Twin Rivers. One of them emanated from the time before that in 2010. So I can't believe that because of that, that there are a number of lawsuits that should beat anybody's. Our legal fees are very little in comparison to what they were. But whenever you look at the kind of things that we had to defend, for example, when Grant started their building of what we call the East Thomas Education Project, they left the district in over $180 million in debt with no revenue stream. We had to defend from the contractor on that, and that was a big, big legal issue. So when we get into legal issues, I think we need to look at the overall thing, and why are they there, and how do you work with them.
Thank you. In 2015, the top three administrators in the district were paid more in their category than any other district in the region, with the district facing the financial shortfalls that it is. Is this the best use of resources? Ms. Fowler, I'll start with you.
Well, number one, the district does not face financial shortfalls. But secondly, the people that we have in our administration, I believe they're worth it, and that they are not incomparable to other individuals who have the same kind of positions. If you will look at Dr. Martinez's salary, he makes $100,000 less, I'm going to say that again, $100,000 less than the superintendent in the Sacramento City Unified School District. He also came to this district and did the things he could for students and for the community. The one that came to the Sacramento City made it very plain, he came to just make his environment better. So those are the kind of things I think you've got to look at. We do have people who are making more money than some of the other districts, but other districts have made more money than ours. So I think whenever you do a accountability study, you have to look at oranges to oranges and apples to apples. You can't just take a blanket attack and say, these people are making too much money, and how many are there? So that's what we're doing in our district, and I think with my background and my financial knowledge, budget knowledge, we do a good job.
Thank you. Mr. Garcia.
Okay. First of all, I don't think it's right that they make that much money. I believe they're qualified. But when Twin Rivers was first, when it first became a district, the whole idea of getting the four little districts together was to get rid of three administrations. And when the first administration came into place, they made a superadministration. You had assistance to the assistance to the assistance. And then as time went by, they started working on that, because the community started complaining, and the issues came up. We had the grand jury investigation, and little by little, it got straightened out. Well, now, we're starting to build that superadministration again, and we can't let that happen, you know? And now, I believe that there's even a bond on the table. And how are you going to ask for a bond when you give your superintendent a raise without even leaking about it? That's what I have to say about that.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Savala.
You know, I'm a firm believer in you get what you pay for, right? And when you have a district that's had its struggles in the past, you know, I think it's fair to go out and get the best talent possible. And I think we've got it, right? I think most people in the region agree. It's a big issue that we're facing, and so you've got to get the talented people. We've got to be competitive. We've got to be just as competitive in what we pay our teachers. But with that said, as a representative of the district, we've got to do a better job of explaining to our taxpayers and to our parents and families what we're doing. It's shameful to read an article in the paper that says we're paying three times or two times as much for an administrative salary. And it's rightful to jump to conclusions, but I think if we can do a better job talking to some of our parents and some of the families and telling them why we're compensating administrators, why we're compensating the teachers the way we are, is we're trying to be competitive. We're trying to make Twin Rivers the gold standard, and that's what I would do. Thank you.
Thank you. Question number four for you all. As a school board member, what is your role in attracting the best teachers for the district? Mr. Savala.
Just as I said, you know, it's about being competitive. You know, after the recession, you know, the way the district throughout the state and the country were handing out pink slips, it was shameful. It's a shameful reality. And now, as things get better, we have a need. Not only do we have a need for teachers, and it's created competition, and we have to be competitive. We want the best and the brightest at all age levels, right? We want young teachers who are just coming out of college to look at Twin Rivers, and we want some of the older seasoned veterans from different districts to come and recognize really good things are happening in Twin Rivers. We've got to make sure the classrooms are adequately supplied with 21st century technology, and we've got to make sure that teachers are compensated fairly. But we also look at the total compensation packet and make sure they're not paying too much for health care, because it makes no difference to give them a better salary than what they get somewhere else, when they're turning around and paying it just to make sure their kids can get to the doctors. So that's what I would do. Thank you.
Mr. Garcia, same question.
Okay. I would have to agree with Ms. Fowler. We do need to look for ways to attract the best and most qualified teachers out there. But we do have to make that an issue. Rather than seeing the teachers' union and the employees as enemies, we have to see them as an ally, and try to find a way to work on a one-to-one basis with them. And I don't believe that's happening today. But, you know, it's not an easy task, but I believe I could work with them and the administration. And we also need to find teachers of color to come into these neighborhoods that are urban, and for the children to feel, you know, that if that person made it that hard, then they can too.
Thank you. Ms. Fowler.
Thank you. I agree that we have to be very competitive in our salaries, and for that reason, we are among the highest-paid teachers in the area. In addition to that, this past year, we have increased the amount of money paid for teachers' health care benefits. In addition to that, I personally insisted that elementary teachers were to be given prep time, the same as our secondary teachers. These are kind of little incentives that make people be a little bit more apt to come to our district than some of the others. I don't know if other districts have those kind of things or not, but I do know that teachers do need the kind of things that make it easy for them to work in a classroom and give our students the best education possible. When we're looking at the kind of things that we need to do for teachers, it's not just a question of what we do or how we do it, but you know, teachers and the district all over the state have to come together and negotiate a contract. This means that there's a lot of minds on what we can do and what we can't do. So those are the kinds of things that need to be done and understood by everyone whenever it comes to teachers and being able to give them. I believe it's important that we not only recruit, retain, and invest in our staff and teachers. We need to make certain they get the tools that they need to have the best opportunities to bring home to those kids in their classroom. Whatever that means, if it means a specialized professional development, or whatever it takes to make them a better teacher, or a teacher that makes it easier for them to work with the kids. So that's what I believe that we need to do in our district.
Thank you.
Can we get a shout out to the kids in the audience and where they're from?
Well, where are y'all from? Grand Lillie, okay.
Go right on. Good cut. Good cut. Good cut.
Okay. Moving on, please.
He's looking for both.
No, no. I had no idea where they were from, truth be told. I thought that was her principal right there, he thought he brought her to school. Thank you.
All right. Ms. Fowler, you're up first for this next question. The old Twin Rivers School District Building, actually the old North Sacramento School District Building on Dixie Anne Boulevard, Dixie Anne Avenue, rather, has been vacant for years. What is your plan or the best use for that building, please?
Well, it's kind of difficult for me to say a lot about that, because we're in negotiations with a charter school. 970 Dixie Anne Avenue, in my opinion, is a historic building. It's one that I want to keep in the area. It's one that I don't want to be bulldozed, nor do I want it to be an eyesore and vandalized. It belongs to Twin Rivers, but right now, the charter school is negotiating for that to be taken over. The redevelopment of the school, or the building itself, I'm working with the Building and Construction Trades, and by the way, they have agreed to do an awful lot of the things for it and contributing. We also have the Laborers Union, and that's agreed to do a lot of the area free. But the thing is, it takes time to negotiate a contract and get the architectural individuals in place. But that particular building will be inhabited by the time school starts again in September.
Okay, thank you for that update. Mr. Garcia, assuming that doesn't happen, what would your plans be?
Well, on a very rare occasion, I would have to agree with Ms. Fowler. That is a historic building, and we cannot let it get vandalized or misused. We could turn it into a big computer lab, or something for the district, you know? He mentioned the charter school. My question is, why didn't they think about that with that property in the Thomas? That property in the Thomas could have been perfectly rented for a charter school, or a college satellite center. And the same thing could happen to that building. Maybe one of the city colleges could use it as a satellite building. But we most definitely have to take care of that building. That's North Sacramento history.
Thank you. Mr. Savala, same answer, or same question, rather, slightly modified. What would you do with it, assuming the charter does not take it over?
You know, that building is partly the reason why I decided to enter this race. You know, it's been a disgrace, looking at that building every day as a resident, as someone who works closely with business folks here, and homeowners here in this district. Can you imagine what that building looks like, full of capacity, 150 employees working there? Where they go eat lunch, where they have coffee? That's the impact that Twin Rivers had the opportunity to have on this community, but they've refused to. And to find out today that there's a negotiation for a charter school, that's all fine and dandy, but there are a host of people in this room today, the North Sacramento Chamber, the Partnership, the City of Sacramento, Neighborhood Association leaders here, who would have loved an opportunity to chime in, to give their two cents on what this can do, what that would mean for this community. And as my opponent said earlier, the city, what I do in the city and what the district is, isn't related. That's foolish. They work hand in hand. If we've got crappy schools, no one wants to come and live here. If no one wants to come and live here, property values plummet. And as property values plummet, less money goes to our schools. We are partners. We should be partners, and we need to be partners, and we haven't been. Councilmember Hanson in City of Sacramento with their old school Fremont is proposing a state-of-the-art reforming arts center. I think that's what we need to be shooting for here. We're shooting way too low, looking for a charter school. What could the possibilities been, had we come to the table and worked with Councilmember Warren, worked with someone in the county, someone? We can do way better than that, but we didn't even get an opportunity from our representative to come to the table. And that's part of the reason why I decided to join this race. Thank you.
Thank you. Hold your applause, Mr. Fowler. Question number six. We will now give each candidate an opportunity to ask one of your other candidates a question. Since we ended up with Mr. Savala, you get to start.
Whew, what am I going to ask? I'll ask my question to my opponent, Ms. Linda Fowler. What is it that, after 41 years in office, what is it that you'd like to accomplish?
I would like to accomplish many more things, of which I have accomplished in the prior years. For example, we had notification, North Sacramento Elementary School District had instrumental music program in every one of our schools. Whenever we unified, if you recall, there was a recession. And whenever we re-unified, we had to cut costs, and one of the things, the casualties, was the music program. This year, I have, and by far, I was working really hard to bring back the instrumental music programs into all of our schools. This year, starting last September, all 52 schools have instrumental music, and we have an revision of arts. In September, we will start an apprentice carpentry program in the locational arts at Fort Hough High School. There are different things that I have done. I've also started, excuse me, worked hard to make certain that the agricultural program in Rio Linda came to fruition. Those are kind of things that we have, and I have worked really hard, and I can tell you, I have individually made certain that those have happened, working with different individuals in the community, and in partnership with businesses. Maybe not in specific business that you belong to, but other businesses. So I have done that, and I will continue to do it.
All right. You've got the question thrown at you. You get to throw the question back at one of your other two.
Mr. Savala, do you know anything at all about the charter school that I'm involved with?
Which one?
I'm involved with one.
Yeah, no, up until the meeting at Haganwood last week, I haven't heard anything about the charter school that you're working with. Last week and tonight is the first conversation I've had publicly about a charter school coming to the Dixie Anne site.
Mr. Garcia, you get to ask a question yourself. That's a hard one, I don't know who to ask.
I'm going to ask Ms. Fowler. Ms. Fowler, if you win this race, is this your last one?
Mr. Garcia, I wake up every morning thanking God that I'm alive. I'm not going to make any kind of commitment to what I'm going to do today, tomorrow, or 10 years from now. I just hope that individuals who have anything to think about of my age, I just hope to die, each one of you are able to live as long as I have, and have had as good a life as I have. So am I going to win again? I don't know. Am I going to stop? I don't know. I just know that whatever I can do to help kids, whenever I can, however I can, as long as God will give me the life and the ability, I will continue doing that.
Thank you. Thank you. Couple more questions that we pre-prepared. The district has faced many fiscal issues since it was created in 2008. As a school board member, what do you think your role is in managing the district's resources? I'm going to start with you, Mr. Savala.
Well, that's exactly another reason why I decided to jump into this race. You know, as Mr. Garcia alluded to earlier, you know, there's talk of a bond, and hopefully it can be settled tonight, whether a bond will be on the November ballot or not. All indicators lead that there will be. Twin Rivers will be asking voters to approve another bond, and those proceeds go to service debt, right? They go to service debt. That's an issue. I'm not here to say I'm supporting a bond, or not supporting a bond. It's a financial reality that the district is up against. As your elected representative, no matter what happens, I want the guy to have that burden on my shoulder of what we do next, because if voters reject it, there's some consequences. Where do we pull money from the service debt? I'm here to make sure we keep it as far away from pulling out of the classrooms as possible, and we continue to make investments into our facilities. If voters decide that the schools are worth it, and they approve a bond, then it's even a bigger burden to make sure that we do what we said we were going to do with the money, and we're transparent, and it gets done. And that's why I decided to run this race. There's also the reality of the new policy of the LAFCC, which requires a tremendous amount of one-on-one work and community engagement with Latino, Spanish-speaking parents who will make up more than half of this area. It's critical that we get on the ground. They need our help. Their children go to our schools. We need to identify what their issues are, and how do we best educate them. I'm here to do that work. I'm here to make that my commitment.
Thank you. Mr. Garcia.
Okay. First of all, I was on the board with Ms. Fowler, and I learned a lot from her. When you're on a board, you only have one employee that you watch, and that's the superintendent. So you have to work with him and have a good rapport. So this micromanaging is not possible, you know? But I'm going to say here and now that I am against the bond, and I'll tell you why I'm against the bond. Because last time we had a bond, our area got the short end of the stick, okay? And this bond, Mr. Savala talks about, is supposed to help out the schools, it's only going to pay debt. And where do we find money? Where do we find? You make cuts at the top, where the administrators are, because that's where the real money is, and those cuts won't hurt the children.
Thank you. Ms. Fowler.
You know, this is a fine example. My two opponents really don't know much about finance. Number one, a bond cannot be used for anything except for capital outlay. It cannot be used for salaries, it cannot be used for administrative purposes, it can't be used for teacher salaries, nothing. Secondly, whenever you have a bond, and Mr. Garcia just alluded to it, that we've got nothing, the last bond that North Sacramento passed, it was the North Sacramento Elementary School District. That was the last one. That bond made sure every one of our schools were upgraded. We even built a brand-new school, the Castori School. All of those schools were absolutely brought to the level of great, of the code and in great condition. So those are the kind of things that I think we need to look at. Mr. Garcia is also talking about, the one person that we have as our employee is right. The board only has one employee, but the board also has a fiduciary responsibility and duty to make certain that everything is done according to policy, laws, and regulations. So whenever you have something, you have a bond, and I'm not saying whether I'm for or against... and I'm not saying whether I'm for or against, because it's only in the talking stage right now. However, we do need to make certain our facilities are good so teachers might truly at work and be in a good place to work.
Thank you. What is your plan as a school board member to increase test scores in the district? Ms. Fowler, your turn.
One of the things that we have done, and which I was very, very supportive of, is that we hired, don't hold me to the number, but approximately 70 teachers this year, which we call teachers on special assignment, to help other teachers to be able to do the kind of things that will bring up test scores. We have also put more emphasis on our supplemental education system, which is funded by Cilemon Money. Those are the kind of things that we're doing. We're also taking special programs for specific things for students. The teachers that I'm talking about, we call them TOSs, or teachers on special assignment, are making a big difference. And I think that people will be really surprised this year whenever the California Department of Education releases the test scores. We're doing a lot of things. We're also giving special training to the teachers because of the Common Core changes. So those are the kind of things that we're doing.
Garcia.
I believe that the key is in the allocation of funds that come to the district. You gotta make sure that they go to the right places, that the EL learners get their full fund, that the special aid. I've had EL teachers tell me that they need more help in the classroom, but there's no funding for it, you know. So, we really gotta keep a key on where and how much money is actually going into these programs, because it's really essential. I know when we were in North Sacramento, my opponent, Ms. Fowler, was very proud that we were always in the black, we were never in the red. But it was mainly because a lot of the funds weren't being spent in the right effort.
Mr. Savala.
Just to clarify, someone who sat on the Facilities Use Master Plan Committee over the summer at the invitation of Dr. Martinez, it was made very clear, bond proceeds for a proposed bond go to debt service, nothing else. Just to make that clear. You know, we need to do a better job funding supplemental programs, as Ms. Fowler said. You know, when my son was in first grade at Noralto Elementary School, he and two other children were at or above grade level when it came to reading. And that meant most of the rest of the classroom were just below. And that's a problem. Right? God bless the teachers who have that job to make sure that not only my son and the other two kids in the class can continue to excel, but also what do you do with the kids who are struggling? Right? Many of them, when they go home, have a very hard time helping them. We need to recognize that that is an issue, not just in Twin Rivers, but specifically in Area 7. Several of the schools are above 50% Latino, and then you park in the mom population. That's almost 70% of the student population that speaks English as a secondary language. That's an issue. That's a reality that we have to deal with head-on. We do that by funding after-school programs that help supplement education, help kids with homework. We do it by making sure we fund a more robust student university, the student liaison. You don't know the miracles that Ms. Fonsa does over there at Harmon-Johnson Elementary School, the rapport she has with parents, with Principal Navas, and what they do. You know why they also, on top of the Blue Ribbons, also won a National Community Schools Award three years ago? It's because they have a little bit of support from the parents, actually, who show up after school and do, they go above and beyond to make sure that kids are learning and getting the help they need. If we can't teach these kids in first, second grade to be reading at grade level, we're in trouble for the rest of the way. And we need to make those investments early on in the after-school program and even summer programs. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm now going to begin to ask questions that were submitted by the audience. First one up. Let's see, everyone says they will provide better communication with parents and teachers. What are your actual plans to make this happen? Mr. Savala.
You know, that's my specialty. That's something that I enjoy doing. I see a lot of familiar faces here in the room today. That's what I love about my job, right? My background is land use planning, environmental planning, where I deal with this boring law called the California Environmental Quali Act that requires a lot of communication with people to understand their rights, environmental issues, land use issues. The same thing with public education. I thrive knocking on doors. I thrive talking to parents about issues that are affecting them in the district. In my current job, working for the City of Sacramento, I interact with parents in Twin Rivers on a regular basis. I am responsible for delivering major capital improvement projects, not at the schools, but everywhere around the schools, because I know that getting to school, sometimes in this city, is a struggle. Right? And three years ago, my boss, Councilmember Warren, made a commitment to make sure that every route to a public school here in North Sacramento in the Twin Rivers District was as pleasant as possible. And in achieving those goals, it took the hard work of knocking on doors, talking to parents, getting them the right letters. We got 15 parents to write letters to the city attorney over there at Harmon-Johnson to bring an administrative penalty to these slum apartment buildings across the street from the school. We got brand-new sidewalks in El Cavino and Clay Street because parents showed up. Right? We got a fantastic application, thanks to the help of parents and principals at some of these schools. None of which, our current trustee was involved in. Parents were looking for leadership. I provided it, and I thrive knocking on doors, talking to parents, and just asking the simple question, "What can I do for you? How can I help?" Because I have resources. I'm not an elected official, but if there's someone I know, there's a number I can call, I'm gonna do it. I'm gonna make the call.
Thank you. Mr. Garcia.
Okay. I believe that I could reach out to parents because of different groups that I've worked with. I'm the vice president of Labor Council for Latin American Advancement, which is a very strong Latino group here. We're the ones that do the Caesar Travis March every year, and we stand up for immigrant rights and against police brutality. And I believe, like Mr. Savala says, we need more input from our parents. And I know I can do that. Because when they see me, they don't see a career politician or a wannabe politician. They see someone that looks just like me.
Thank you, Mr. Garcia. Ms. Fowler, your turn.
First of all, I appreciate the work that Mr. Savala did. But you know, you have to understand that he was paid doing that. This is not something he volunteered to do. He's on a city payroll. Secondly, when we're talking about being involved, you have to understand that I don't just represent Area 7. Apparently, my two opponents feel that's the only place that you should do it. But whenever I took my oath of office, I said that I was going to represent every child in the Twin Rivers Unified School District. That means that Areas 1 through 6, as well as 7, have children who should have the same opportunity to get an education and to do the things that the children in that Area 7 get. So that's what I do. I am not a turf person. I work at all of the areas there. When you look at 61,000-plus people in the district, you can understand that you can't knock on every door whenever you want something done, unless, of course, you're paid. Secondly, whenever we're looking at the things that need to be done and transparency and being involved, I would like to see both of my opponents, at some point in time, to come to the board meetings and know just what goes on. They're not there. They haven't been there. Mr. Garcia comes whenever there's a kind of perceived speculation of a controversy, but that's not when you do on board meetings. I'm there every board meeting. I have not missed a board meeting.
Thank you, ma'am. Okay, this is obviously a site-specific question, but it's worth asking. Who made the decision to build a new school, Norwood Middle, without a cafeteria? Ms. Fowler, you get to start that one.
Well, that was the Grant Union High School District Board and Mr. Buchanan have made that. That was, that school was built in 2002, I believe. It was well before the unification, and North Sacramento didn't have any state records whatsoever.
Mr. Garcia.
Once again, I have to agree with Ms. Fowler. That was done before we became Twin Rivers. That's it.
Mr. Garcia, or Mr. Savala.
Yeah, I wouldn't have answered that question, because I'm not a current board member. I wasn't a board member during that time.
Okay, this may be pressed. Why did Grant High School go so long without heat and air conditioning? Should that have been a part of the allocation for oversight funding? Mr. Savala, you get to start that one.
You know, that was an issue that a lot of folks paid attention to early on. I remember it was, you know, community leaders like Greg Jefferson and his wife Christine, who made that an issue earlier on. I think Mr. Jefferson even pointed out line items in previous budgets where the pool had been fixed, the heat and air conditioning had been taken care of. And all along, children were in classrooms without heat and air conditioning, not just at Grant High School, but also at Harmon-Johnson Elementary School. And that's shameful. I don't know why. I wasn't involved. I wasn't on the board. I don't know how those oversights, how those mistakes were made. They're just unacceptable. And at some point, when we come to a point in time where kids, and if we worked for the media attention, they probably never would have got fixed. So, that's all I have to say about that.
Mr. Garcia.
Mr. Savala is telling the truth. It was the community that made that happen. And it's not even fixed totally. About a year ago, in the newspaper, the president of the board, Ms. Sandoval, and Dr. Martinez were talking about how they fixed the pool at Grant High School. The pool is still a hole in the ground. You know what I mean? But yet, they came out in the Sacramento Bee saying that they fixed that. You know? So, it was wrong. And who to put the blame on? Well, you'd have to blame the administration. But, that's it.
Ms. Fowler.
This is a crude example of, and if Mr. Savala and Mr. Garcia have been at the board meetings, they would have understood exactly what happened. Number one, we passed an emergency meeting, and this is all documented for any of you who are speculating that this is not correct. It's in the minutes. I can give it to you. We passed an emergency meeting on that to have the HVAC fixed at the different schools. But because, and I don't want to say it because it's not stated, but because the classified union would not allow us to hire outside individuals, and we did not have qualified individuals to do the HVAC work. So, we were at a standstill. And then it came up again, and then this is when we passed another emergency process to be able to put that in. These are something that go through processes. They're not something that you just snap your fingers and get whenever you want to get something done. We have a union that we had to contend with, which by law and by actual things that we have to do, kept us from doing things, so we didn't want to do it. You can't just go out and say, "Well, we decided to do it." And people want us to come out and say, "All right, I want this done, so you do it." You have to go through the right channels to get it done. So those are the kind of things that I think that would, if people would come to our board meetings, and if they would listen to what was going on, if they would look at the agenda, they would see and be able to follow some of those things that actually happens in board meetings and how the processes are. And that's what happened on this. Now, it's RC HVAC, and that is what happened on that. Mr. Garcia alludes to the swimming pool. We got that funded. That has been put through, but there's been requirements through the Department of General Services that have to be approved. But it will be open this fall. It's going through the channels. It's done correctly. But you can't just go out there and hire a digger to come out and fix it. It has to go through the proper processes.
Thank you. In the past, okay, hang on, I gotta rework this. In a passport member of the Real and the Unified State District, we were blessed with a large population of students whose language, English, was a second language, ESL kids. They had English immersion classes. Your turn first, Ms... Are we doing anything with English immersion anymore?
Yes, we are. We have English immersion classes. But let me, I want to also mention, because Mr. Savala said something about English as a second language for our students. One of the things that I strongly believe in is that whenever you have parents who can speak English, they can be involved with their students. And when they're involved with their students, their kids, they are better students. They learn better. Everything is greater. When I talk about the charter school that I'm involved with, this is not a K-12 program. This charter school that I'm involved with, it's in the heart of Del Paso Heights. We have almost 800 people enrolled in our school now. We started two, two years ago. We have over 500, 500 parents who are learning English as a second language. This is what we're doing, because we believe that kids do better when their parents know how to help them. And they can only help them when they can communicate. These are people, these are, this school is specifically for those individuals who have dropped out of high school and do not have a high school diploma. They get job skills, they get diploma, and all the other kind of things connected to it.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Garcia.
Okay. I hear my opponent raving about this charter school, and yet this charter school is at the scene of controversy. It does, my opponent is being paid by that charter school on top of getting a stipend from the school district. Sort of like what the chancellor from UC Davis is going through right now. And my question is, why isn't there more investigation being done on why she's getting paid from this charter school? You know what I mean? Is it because our children are in an urban area that no one's asking these questions? Because they're ready to set the chancellor from UC Davis on fire for doing practically the same thing? So I really don't understand why she's crazy at that charter school so much.
Mr. Savala.
Let's repeat the question again, Dave.
Sure. We were talking about English immersion classes, and quite honestly, I butchered it. No other word for it.
Got to remember it now.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah. No, it's the same point I tried to hit home. It's a reality. Just, I think we're all in agreement, you know, Ms. Fowler and Mr. Garcia, that we have a high concentration of English learners in Area 7. And as Ms. Fowler pointed out, we have them throughout the district. But when voters approved Measure G a few years ago, they sent a clear signal. They want representatives from this area specifically to champion this area. I have, I've got my eye on the entire district, and I understand that I'm here to play with everyone and to improve the entire district. But when I look at the seven schools, the Area 7 and the schools that I want to represent, I go through every SARC report. I talk to parents and principals there, and I understand what the issues are, and the answer is consistent. You've got young kids who can't read at grade level. And we have to do a better job with the English immersion, with supplemental after-school programs, and summer programs. You know, I was very, very grateful to hear that the district had funded the mom Saturday school a few years back. I don't know if they continue to fund it. But that's one of the things, that's a tremendous, tremendous program for an area like Area 7, where you have a high concentration of mom students who are allowed to go to school throughout the summertime to help give them the extra help they needed. I'm a big champion of the issues that are specific to Area 7. And I think at the heart of those issues are the English, the challenges that many of the parents and the children have with English, English as a second language, and how they get their work done, particularly with Common Core. I remember when my son brought home his Common Core homework, it was a struggle. I can only imagine what parents who struggle with English are going through. And so we need to make sure we're there to help them.
All right. Thank you. This was touched on right previously a little bit, but I'm going to ask the question more directly this time. What are your plans to enhance creative arts programs from Twin Rivers schools? Mr. Savala, your first.
You know, I'm a big fan of the arts. You know, here on Del Paso Boulevard, the Arts District, in case somebody didn't know it. And that's a bell and whistle to me. I'd love to fund the arts. But I think the priority is right now is, can our kids read at grade level? I think before we have a conversation about any other bell and whistle, like an arts program, a Black Box deal that I've heard tossed around, you know, I'm more concerned about the real fundamentals of what goes on inside the classroom. Do we have 21st century learning environments with computers and tablets and the proper boards that we need, the proper books that we need? I understand there's some education here tonight, and I know, I'm not naive. I do understand what the arts, what music does. There's several ways to teach children. But I'm really concerned about the basics, mathematics and reading. Reading is fundamental. If we cannot give kids reading at grade level, we're gonna fail them for the rest of their academic lives. So, although I'd love to commit and sit up here and say, "I'm gonna fight for the arts," I'm not looking that far yet. I'm still looking at the basics of strong math scores and reading scores.
Thank you. Mr. Garcia.
Well, that was a great answer, and I believe it came from its heart. And it's true. We need to look at getting our test scores up and helping our English learners. But at the same time, we do have to bring in the arts. And we have to work with our communities and organizations that are in the city and try to bring that in. But most definitely, we need to improve on our test scores.
Thank you. Ms. Fowler.
Well, as in my opening statement, I told you that I had supported the arts. We also have the Creative Connections Arts School in our district, of which I strongly support. But other, more than that, there's been study after study after study that shows and absolutely verifies that children who have music are much better than math and science. And those are the kind of things that I like to work with. Whenever we have anything that will further the achievement of students, I implore. I believe that we do have to have all of our students living, working at grade level. But I also understand that there's some times that that But I also understand that there's some times that that doesn't happen. And we, I deal in reality. I don't react, I don't deal in what we're gonna do or what we need to do. I work in the area of what we can do and what we are doing. I believe in being realistic about things, and I don't want to go in and make criticisms on things unless I have a solution. And if you don't have a solution, then you gotta work with somebody who does, if you believe in something strongly. And that's how I do. I don't think that it's, eliminating the arts is any way to go. I think it needs to be stronger. I think that we need to put more emphasis on students being able to be creative. Because if you have the arts and you're creative, you, this doesn't just stay with whatever they have in the arts. This translates into the kind of things they do in everyday life. It also translates into their learning abilities. So I'm very strong for the arts, and I make no regrets about it, and I don't apologize at all for the fact that I really believe in the arts. I've never had the opportunity to have it in my life, but I certainly want to give it to every child that wants it.
Thank you. In the interest of time, I'm gonna make this one a very short answer, please. Have you recently visited any local schools and had an open, honest, open and honest conversations with teachers and parents? Ms. Fowler, your first.
Yes, I visited the Northwood School, not Northwood School, Aralta School and the Johnson School about three weeks ago, both of those. And I talked with teachers there, I also talked with parents and the other members of the staff. I do this, but one of the things I don't do, I go to these places, and I talk with people, and I understand what's going on, but I don't pat myself on the back, because I don't want to break my arm, number one. But number two, that's not what you should do. You don't brag about what you do on something like that. You just do it, and that's what I do.
Thank you, Mr. Garcia.
I'd have to agree with Ms. Fowler, we shouldn't be patting ourselves on the back. But I've been doing it at Grant High School for a long time. That's why I'm the president of the School Site Council, and I've been there for four years.
Thank you. Ms. Savala.
Yes, I have, and I wouldn't call it patting myself on the back, but just extremely proud of the work that I do, right? I truly believe that through my position, the position with working with Councilmember Warren, and our democracy here in the United States of America, I'm empowering people, right? When families don't speak English and they're afraid to call the cops, it's a great pleasure and honor to bring our captain to their doorstep and to talk to him about how easy it is to pick up the phone and call the 911 if they feel there's an emergency, right? When parents are tired of looking at drug-infested homes, when parents are tired of cars whipping donuts as they're dropping off their children, it's empowering to give them a voice, to say, "Hey, here's a number to call, let me help you." That's what I'm here to do, I'm here to help, I'm here to listen. It's not about patting myself on the back, it's doing the good work of empowering neighbors, giving them the tools that they need to make this city and this area the best it can be. That's what I've done for the past four years, and that's what I hope to continue doing. Thank you.
All right, thank you. I literally have name, rank, and serial number here. I am a certified teacher who often sells for the Twin Rivers Unified School District. Who is compensated much lower than the regular teachers? This is a simple question, why? Mr. Savala?
You know, I don't know the answer to that question, why they're not compensated. Is it on a fair play with another school, is that the question?
Unclear.
Unclear. Right, like, as I mentioned earlier in my comments, right? And when you have a teacher shortage, when there's a high demand for quality teachers, it's important for us to be competitive, to be as competitive as possible. You know, having kids that go to public school, even here in the Twin Rivers District, I've seen what some of the teachers are up against. I see parents picking up their kids at three o'clock in the afternoon in their pajamas, right? Are they your partners? Probably not. I understand the challenges that teachers face every day in the classroom, and I think compensation is important. Not just what they make in salary, but also in total compensations and how their healthcare benefits are paid for, and what they're paying out of their pocket to make sure their children have vision and dental and things that they need, so they have a good quality of life.
Thank you, Mr. Garcia.
Okay, I believe that substitute employees should be paid same as your regular employees, and that would, that would make them want to be more attracted to our district. But that's something that would have to be dealt with, human resources, and maybe the unions, but they should not be paid on a fair rate as the rest of the employees of the district. Some people say that I'm in the pocket of special interest. We should make teachers special interests, and we should make our employees special interests.
All right, Ms. Fowler, your turn.
Number one, salaries are negotiated with the teachers' union and with the district. And right now, I honestly cannot tell you what one teacher makes and what another teacher makes. There are different areas in the salary schedules, so I don't have that with me tonight. But it's a public record, so anybody's allowed to look at it, because it's already up in the district.
All right, quick answer to this question, please. We are running out of time, and I do want to get a couple more of these audience questions in. How are the schools raising awareness about the resources for the needy families to access in the community? Ms. Fowler? One more time. How are schools raising awareness about the resources for the needy families to access in the community?
Well, we have several different kinds of things that were going on in our district. There's always some kind of program that teachers are working with, parents are working with, the police officers. It's always working on that kind of thing. So, I can't, we also have our rain project that we make certain that children who need additional assistance with the teachers and so on, we help them with that. We help them with being able to go to college whenever they don't have the finances to buy the necessary things for their own, like sheets and pillow slips and towels and everything when they get to college. Those are different things that we do in our district.
Thank you, Mr. Garcia.
Okay, I truly believe that that question should be answered by the trustee, but I know that there's a lot of great organizations like the Food Bank, and some local unions are out there trying to help undocumented people, and the needy and the hungry. But I think the district needs to work more, and I believe they will. I believe they're on the right track with this kind of an issue, you know? But really, myself and Mr. Savala really wouldn't be able to answer that, because we're not trustees.
Well, I can answer that as far as what, you know, part of my platform. And, you know, both of my opponents have hinted, one has said it explicitly at the last meeting, that I clearly don't understand what the roles and responsibilities are of a trustee. We have a very narrow mandate, instead of responsibilities, fiduciary, yada, yada, yada. Stay in our lane, and this is what we do. I'm here to bring information, and bring as much information as I possibly can. If there's a program in the county, at the state level, if there's a social program that'll help a family, and I have access to that information, it's my job, and it's my duty to make sure that information is shared with people who go to school in the Twin Rivers District. That's my priority. That's what we need to do more of. We need partnerships. It takes a village, as corny as that sounds, but it truly does. There are people in this room today that are working their tails off to improve the quality of life for kids in North Sacramento, because that's what I'm about. I'm about North Sacramento. I'm not about Rio Linda, Alberta, foothill farms. I don't even know how they're doing. I'm about North Sacramento, 95815, Area 7, the kids in these schools, and I want to help increase their quality of life. That's what I'm here for, that's why I decided to join this race. And if I have information, I'm gonna share it.
Thank you. Two left, two, two questions left, actually, one question left. We are, we are out of time. Mr. Savala, you get to start this one. Where would you like to see Twin Rivers in five years? What changes are important?
You know, I'd like to see improved test scores. I'd like the paper to have nicer things to say. And in all credit to Ms. Fowler, there are some amazing things going on at Twin Rivers. You know, for some reason, we have a, I don't know if you call it a media bias, but bad news seems to be in every headline, not just with Twin Rivers, but North Sacramento, Del Paso Heights. If something happens on Del Paso Road in Otomus, hey, guess what, it happened in the Heights. If something happened over here on Dixie An, guess what? It happened in the heart of the Heights. Those are issues that we're all struggling with. We have a perception issue, right? We've gotta do a better job of putting this community out. Look at these kids just came here from playing baseball, right? There's amazing things, there's new businesses coming here to the area. There's great things happening here, there's great communities. I want to be a part of that, I want to be a champion, I want to use my voice. If I'm privileged to earn your vote and a seat on the Twin Rivers, I'm gonna use that position to continue to escalate and improve the reputation of Twin Rivers. And it can happen. Ten years ago, no one took their kids to Yolo County to watch the unified. Look at it now, it's a model, right? Old Broderick, look at it today. I can't even afford to live there if I wanted to. So it is possible.
Mr. Garcia.
I would like to see our test scores go up. I would like to see our facilities improve, and I would like to see our employees treated with dignity and given a livable wage. And there's a lot I would like to see, but I need to get there first. Thank you very much.
Ms. Fowler.
Last month, the California Department of Education actually awarded sixteen schools in Sacramento County the Gold Ribbon status. Eight of those schools was in Twin Rivers. The other eight were distributed among the other school districts here in Sacramento. Twin Rivers has a lot of work to get done, but we have done a lot of work. You know, I was raised in the migrant farm labor camps, fields in California. I know how difficult the school, how difficult it is to get schools. I worked with the migrant children. I would love to see in five years to have every child the opportunity to go to college. That would be one of the greatest things that I would be able to see. So, if you're looking at something that you'd have in five years, I would love to see every school in California to be a Gold Ribbon school, most of all, the ones in Area 7. We have four, now we need more.
Thank you. I will now give each of you candidates thirty seconds for a close, and then the event will be over. Mr. Savala, you went first the last time, Ms. Fowler went third. Ms. Fowler, I'm gonna give you first shot this time.
Well, I want to thank everyone for coming tonight. I think it's a great thing and an honor for everyone to be here and to be involved in school. I think that being able to become involved in schools is one of the greatest things that we can do. Mr. Savala has mentioned several things that he has done, and I really appreciate his work. But don't forget, he was paid to do those things. This was not something that the school district did or should have done. So those are the kind of things that we need to look at. I want to also address the accusation from Mr. Garcia about my salary from the charter school. I can work for any employer that wants to. This is an independent school, it's totally interconnected from Twin Rivers. There is no conflict of interest, and to make the entrance is just wrong.
Garcia, your turn, thirty seconds to close, please.
Okay. I believe that a school board member should have real ties to the community that they represent. And when I say real ties, I believe that they should be a longtime resident. They should know the struggles and the needs of the community, and they should be there on the street, talking to people, trying to help out people, you know? And I want to say something to these kids. You guys can do it. You can be like Mr. Savala one day, you know? You can be like myself, you just don't ever give up, and don't let nobody say you can't do it. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Savala, thirty seconds to close, please.
You know, as I said at the top, I wanted to give two words, some criteria for tonight. It's transparency and community engagement, because I think those things are paramount to what I want to do. I said it over and over again, I understand the narrow mandate ahead of me, what my roles and responsibility are as a trustee, believe me. But I'm looking to go above and beyond the call of duty. The status quo isn't working. We need to do something else. If the rules that exist don't allow us to do X, Y, and Z, then we need to change the rules. That's what, that's what our democracy is about, and that's what the fight I'm fighting here today. I want to make sure that if a rule isn't working for kids in Area 7, then we're working to change that rule. And if we can't change that rule at the local level, we do what Phil Serna did as mayor years ago when I was a kid in high school, right? We have the power, just because we sit in the seat for Twin Rivers doesn't mean we're limited. We can do anything we put our minds to, with the help of people in this room, with the help of so many people who are committed and dedicated to North Sacramento and Twin Rivers, we can do whatever we want. It's our city, it's our district, and it's headed in the direction that we put it in. I want to be a leader at the forefront of moving the agenda forward